Is that Mike?
Yep, we're good.
All right, Planning Board Appeal is now in session. The only item on the agenda tonight is the appeal by Namali Power LLC seeking administrative appeal with Planning Board Administrative Officer's decision regarding the Planning Board's 90-day review period for a large solar system development master plan review at 2340 West Main Road. Now, before we get started, I just want to remind everybody here, and this is probably one of the largest groups we've had in a long time, the absolute only thing this board will entertain tonight is on timeliness. We will not even remotely discuss views, buffers, anything of that nature that pertains to it. It strictly deals with the clock. That's it. So, once the appellant has presented their side, we will ask for abudders or interested parties more than welcome to speak, but the minute you go off on that tangent, I'm going to have to stop you and ask you to sit down, okay? Because we're just, we're not going to open Pandora's box. That's not what this is about, all right? So, Mr. Lynch? Okay, so, I've kind of done a little timeline thing. I've taken some time, so if you don't mind, I'm going to run date by date, just so everybody's on the same page, right? Starts on May 21st. That's when the master plan application was complete. It was placed on the Planning Board's June 9 meeting, correct? Okay, June 9th. This was taken from the Planning Board's recorded meeting minutes, okay? Meeting was held virtually via the Zoom video conferencing platform in accordance with the executive orders of the governor due to COVID-19 pandemic, correct? Okay. At approximately 7:20, it was announced that the Zoom link was not allowing individuals or members of the public to access the meeting. So it was noted that without public access, the meeting would not continue. Attorney Kevin Gavin, Town Portsmouth Solicitor, stated the meeting would have to be continued to a later date, and new notifications of the hearing date and letters would have to be sent to abudders and be advertised in accordance with town regulations, correct? Okay. Motion was made to continue this petition to July 14th. It was unanimously voted on. Okay. Denali Power did not have legal representation at that meeting, correct? Okay. And we get on to the extenuating, so, okay, so on July 14th, Edward Sapon presented to the Planning Board, again, no legal representation, correct? Okay. At the end of that meeting, a motion was made in second to continue the master plan approval request by Namali Power, okay? And it's my understanding that prior, after the motion was made, but prior to the vote, Mr. Sapon chimed in, agreed that the next meeting he'd provide some viewshed analysis that someone was looking for, and then the motion to continue the master plan was approved. Mr. Sapon never objected to that continuance, correct? Okay. August 11th, a motion was made in second to continue the agenda item nine, which was Namali Power to next regularly scheduled meeting for, and that was based on, at that time, they had retained yourself as counsel, correct? So you requested, or Denali Power, the appellant, requested that that be continued. Okay, all right. So September comes around, and that meeting was canceled due to an error in posting notice under the Open Meetings Act, correct? Okay. October 13th, now being represented by yourself, Lynch Moore, Brigado, Brigado Domo and Lynch. Let's see, there was some discussion by board members and completion of public comment. You had explained to the board that the proposed plan met the requirements for master plan approval and asked the Planning Board to grant the approval. A motion was made in second to continue the master plan approval to the next regularly scheduled meeting of November 10th, under condition that the applicant provide a better concept land state plan and that the applicant attempt to speak with the abudders regarding the site. The motion was then amended in second to include a third condition, that the applicant provide a rudimentary storm water management design. The motion carried with six members voting and one member opposed, okay? And there were no objections to that continuance, correct? Okay, I got that, but there was no objection by the appellant to the continuance, correct? Right, but at that, but at that point in time, the appellant did have the right to say, whoa, 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 we object. So, and let me back up. Well, let me go on to November 10th. It was finally at the November 10th meeting, the first time at the beginning, beginning of the meeting, Attorney Jay Lynch, representing the applicant, Namali Power, argued that the Planning Board continued the application, which was submitted in May 21st, and failed to take action in the application within the 90-day time period, stipulating Article 6, Section 4 of the Portsmouth Land Development and subdivision regulations. You requested that the Planning Board Administrative Officer issue a certificate of master plan approval, okay? Again, there was some discussion with the town solicitor and planning board chairman. For the record, you restated your argument and then proceeded with the presentation, correct? So you said at the beginning, you reiterated, and then you continued on, correct? I totally understand that, okay? So in your closing comments, you reiterated your argument that the application is entitled to master plan approval because according to town regulations, the Planning Board failed to act on the application with the required 90-day time period, noting that the evening represents the third hearing before the board and that the application has necessary approvals and exceeds the ordinance in several ways. At that point in time, the board voted unanimously to deny the master plan approval. That's why you're here. Wow. Rhode Island General Law. Yep. Right. Okay, I guess one could, I guess one could, in some cases, define what written consent is. There's implied consent. Implied consent is, we'd like to continue, and right off the bat, Mr. Sapon says, yeah, not a problem, we'll bring this to you your next meeting. That happened a couple of meetings, okay? From that point, it wasn't writing. It was public record, written into the minutes of the Planning Board. It's semantics, I get it, semantics, but it's written, okay? Okay. So if I understand that logic correctly, and I read the Rhode Island General Law, I see what it says, and that's not what it used to say, it'd been modified to add the written part into it. So at any point in time, if the Planning Board is going to continue something, it's going to run over the clock, it's like, whoa, timeout, somebody go get a typewriter, somebody go get a computer, we got to sit here and take 10 minutes to type something out and say, here, is that correct? Okay. So, all right, I mean, I don't have much more to add until it gets to the latter part of it. So I don't know if any of the other board members have any questions. Go ahead. There are certain time regulations for many things in town, zoning, planning, building permits, things of that nature.
Right. Chairman, not the, that's only the Planning Board that has the timeline on the decisions, not the zoning board.
No, but building permits, things of that nature do. If you apply for a building permit, you don't expect to only have so much time, et cetera, so.
And, and Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is limited to master plan approval, too. It's master plan approval that has the 90-day timeframe written into the rules of the board and the statute, and this was master plan approval.
Right. So why, rather than continue, this is, this is one I don't understand, because at the, which one was it? It was the August 11th meeting, rather than asking for a continuance, why not just say, hey, we don't need a continuance, just give us the master plan approval? Time had run out. I'm just curious why it wasn't brought up then?
Well, we brought, well.
It wasn't brought up.
No, that's correct. We had two attorneys that just got involved in the, the application that were hired at the end of July. We were getting prepared for the August meeting, and that's why we did not raise it before then.
But then again, it wasn't brought up in the October meeting either. Why not, why not come in in October and say, hey, we should have said this back in August? But now, I, I guess my point is, is I could probably push, based on this appeal, I could push a master plan approval through by just sitting back and saying, if they want to continue it, let them. I'll call the clock out, you know? Doesn't sound like we're going to win anyway, so let's just run the clock out, you know? I'm going to go down that route. I don't understand why, if the clock was so important, so important, that it was never brought up. The minute Sapon hired your firm on to do this, and you started reading, the clock started to your point, they deal with it all the time, you could have said, hey, wait a minute, you don't even, you know what, we'll represent you, but at the end of the day, we're just going to go in and tell them it's approved.
That wouldn't have been the position, and, you know, what the board should be aware, what this board should be aware of, this, the 90-day requirement is not intended to, it's intended to keep the Planning Board's feet to the fire, not the applicant. The applicant doesn't have, you know, can sit back and do whatever it wants to do, but the Planning Board has to take formal action within 90 days. If they don't, under the statute and the rules, it's approved.
Okay.
And there's no waiver. The fact that you asked for one continuance does not mean that the Planning Board can take its sweet time and continue this on, add infinitum. They still have an obligation to act in a timely manner, and that was not done here.
Okay. Any else have any questions?
No, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Lynch?
No, that's it.
Okay. I will now entertain comments from any interested parties that would like to speak. Is there anyone here? Raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth.
Yes.
Could I have your full name and address?
Richard Munch, 775 Union Street.
Okay, Mr. Munch.
All right, I'd like to begin by reading a quick thing that I've written, and then I've got a couple of comments I'd like to make. I'll keep it brief. All right, I'm part of a group of residents that went to all the Planning Board meetings concerning this Namali solar project. I'd like to state that the letter dated December 10th, 2021, sent to Mr. Russo by the Planning Board's Administrative Officer accurately describes the events that took place. At each meeting, we brought up a number of basic questions and requests which concerned us. When Namali's, excuse me, representatives were not prepared to answer some of these concerns, the Planning Board gave them more time to respond. At times, I felt that Namali Power and its representatives were very ill-prepared to respond to basic questions that were asked. All the time, the Planning Board was fair to both sides and certainly listened to all concerns. The timeline for the final decision was part of the due diligence process. The Planning Board did an excellent job in dealing with this application. The bottom line is that this industrial solar project does not belong in this location. It was in a unanimous decision by the Planning Board, and my opinion is that the appeal should be denied. I finished writing this up last night, and, you know, I, I went back and I read Mr. Russo's letter, and he, and he wanted, he wanted a decision by July 30th, 2021. Now, at that point, there had been one meeting in front of the Planning Board, and it was the July 14th meeting. And I was about last night to start writing up a bunch of things that happened at that meeting, and I was going to present it to you guys tonight. But while I was contemplating the specifics that I wanted to bring up, my wife Jill started watching the, the recorded meeting, and, you know, she said, hey, come over and watch this, because I hadn't seen it since July. I knew specifically what went on at the meeting. I have all the minutes, we've gone through them, and I was really aware of it. But I sat down with her, and I watched the meeting. And I decided, you know, I, I don't need to really prolong this with you guys, because if anyone watched that meeting that night, you'd get an immediate answer to your, to what you asked Mr. Lynch about. Why wasn't this brought up at the August meeting, and why wasn't it brought up at the October meeting? You should really watch the video, because if you watch the video, you're going to see that myself and a group of other people that were at all of these meetings brought up some basic questions, especially at the July meeting, well, we did at the other ones, too, but we brought things up at the July meeting, and Namali Power and its representatives at that meeting were totally, totally not able to answer a lot of our questions. And to be quite frank with you, I left that meeting that night, and I was like, wow, I was shocked at how ill-prepared they were for the, the project that these guys wanted to do, how little they knew about it. They had their landscape architect, they had their engineer here. We asked some real rudimentary questions that didn't require master plan planning. They didn't have the answers to them. So, so you, you ask.
Mr. Chairman, I think that, I think this board is focused on the timeliness of, and, and not the specifics of the petition and whether they were prepared.
I will say this, Mr. Board, and, and taking a number of hours going through this, I'm going to let Mr. Munch continue, just on the unpreparedness, because it does play a role in some things.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm almost done.
I thought we were focusing on the Planning Board decision whether or not it was in a timely manner.
Well, we are.
Well, I can end with this, to be honest with you. You asked Mr. Lynch why they didn't demand it in August, and you asked him why they didn't demand it in October, because it would have been denied. Anyone at these meetings would real, would, would tell you that if Mr. Lynch or anyone else got up and said, hey, man, the 90 days is up, we demand master plan approval, that Planning Board would have turned it down on the spot, unequivocally, they would have turned it down.
And that speculation, but, yeah.
Okay, you know, and I'm, and that's basically what I mean, I can go on and on, but there's, there's a lot of other people that want to get up and make comments about this, but, you know, I'll, I'll leave it at this. If this meeting gets over, and if you guys have any questions at all about this, just watch the July meeting, watch the section about Namali Power, and I think a lot of your questions will be answered.
Thank you, Mr. Munch. Anyone else? Okay, so, I'll wait till you, raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Full name and address, please.
Jill Munch, 775 Union Street.
Okay, Mrs. Munch, before you go on, you don't need to add anything that has to do with being prepared by the appellant. We've already heard it, we don't need to add it. All you need to say is, I agree with Mr. Munch, because I'm not going to have a dozen people come up and say the same exact thing when it's already been said, and you can just agree to that.
Okay, I agree with that, and I'm going to add one thing.
Okay.
And it goes, it goes towards the timeline.
Right.
And it goes towards the October meeting.
Okay.
Where it's implied that they consented to continue the meeting, because at that October 13th meeting, they were asked, the appellants were asked to meet with the abudders and the neighbors on Union Street, and we did have a meeting on October 22nd. They came to my home at 775 Union Street, and we spent an hour or so talking about their plans and listening to them. So obviously, again, that's another example of this was agreed upon to be continued without a written consent.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Robert Hale, 11-815 Union Street, Portsmouth. I'm one of the abudders. I swear, I agree, whatever. I agree with all the facts that have been stated to this point, and I want to add one thing with regards to timeliness. When the first meeting was set, I, as the butter, did not receive a notification. When I contacted the Planning Board, I was told that Namali Power certified to them that I had been notified. I demanded that they be removed from the agenda because my rights were being denied as a town, as a town citizen and taxpayer. And of course, it amounted to getting, getting, not getting my request in place. The reason I bring this up is, is we want to talk about when they started the clock, okay? They started, the clock starts when they are in full compliance with the regulations that this town has, and they were not in compliance, and they falsified the certification to the town.
Well, that's.
That's my, that is my opinion.
Okay, exactly.
Okay, but I'm letting you know, just as I told the town planner, I did not receive notification as an abutter, as is required, and I was told that Namali Power had certified to the town that I had been notified, and that was not the case.
Just so you know, having been notified means they mailed the notifications out, and even in, even as this board's positioned as a zoning board, we do occasionally have people come up saying, if I didn't read in the paper, I wouldn't have known it. It's not uncommon when both things are sent out, that they send back or never make it there, so.
But it's, but they certified.
Certified that they, I mean, the only way, they get a list, they get on the list, they mail them out, they're certifying, they mail them out to the list of abudders within so many feet. They can't guarantee that it made it to your house once they mail it, and there's no requirement in the town that it must be sent out certified.
Well, then how can the town planner tell me that Namali Power certified it to them?
They certified that they nailed everything out to the abudders.
Okay, well, then I question that.
That's something to take up with the town councils and the ordinances.
Well, no, this, this has to do with timeliness, notification, because they want, they want the clock to start at a certain time, and that's fine, that's fine, but it should start when the proper notifications have been made.
Okay.
So, so at the very least, I would ask you to consider that that's in question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Full name and address?
Christian Sullivan, 799 Union Street. I'm the main abutter, the bottom. I obviously agree with everything that was said here. I understand you want to hone completely in on the chronological order of things, so I'll keep it brief, but I definitely wanted to add in that this proposal, unlike any other, did not provide any concessions or compromises for any of the abudders.
That has nothing to do with the timeliness, so that's one thing we can't entertain.
I understand. I just hope that you guys will also see here that we've got large-scale corporation that is attempting to strong our, so.
Again.
Understand.
All righty. Yep. Anyone else? Yes, sir? No?
I do.
Full name and address, please.
Simal Brock Kaderken, K-A-D-R-C-N, 829 Union Streets. We are new owners of 829 Union Streets, so we just moved in January. We are abudders, and even though we just came a little late to this issue, me and my wife, we just paid attention to it, close attention to it, and we've been tracking, we track all the meetings, all the, most of the meetings recorded live, and we, and as you just highlighted, we want to scope, you want to scope the parameters of this debate today, and I will just say that we support the board's decision on this letter for December 10, 2021.
Okay, that we can't entertain. That, the fact that you agree with what the Planning Board's decision was.
That is my opinion.
But it has nothing to do with what's before us tonight.
So I, I, I agree with the decision of the board that the 90-day timeline issue, so I, okay, I'll agree, I'll give you, Mr. Munch, is what I'm going to say.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am? You could have come up the middle. It's okay. Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Full name and address, please.
Siobhan Thurston, 664 Union Street, Alme Thurston Farm. I have done extensive research, I have followed the, the abudders. Please deny this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Do you have anyone on the line, Mike? I do have a couple of letters in here.
Yeah, we do have someone online, and anyone else online, they're on Zoom, so if you would like to give a public comment, you can use the raise hand function, and you'll be called on. Thanks.
We have a raised hand there, I thought I saw one.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, this.
Who's speaking?
This is Mara, she in 105 C Meadow Drive. I said, hi.
She, swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, yes, I believe that I have, in fact, I know I have it. It's easy to get here. I have your letter right in front of me. Now, you can either briefly highlight it, or I could read it. It's entirely up to you.
Yeah, I, I could briefly highlight it because you conveyed the issue of the timeline very well, and I just would ask formally that those minutes be incorporated into the record of the meeting as well as my letter. But I, as I said in the letter, I don't present these minutes to debate the issues on the merits of the application. The applicant has not chosen to file any appeal on the merits. Clearly, the applicant got a full and fair hearing, lost on the merits, and there is no basis to claim any error by the Planning Board. This is an administrative appeal addressed only to the issue of whether the zoning board of review can impose the drastic sanction of approval by default. I would ask the zoning board to review and also consider, as stated in the case cited by the appellant, New England Development versus Berg, where the Tiverton Planning Board held hearings on a similar application for 319 days, and, and the Planning Board won in that case. And the Planning Board won in that case. The court said that imposing the drastic sanction of the approval of an application for failing to meet the deadline serves to remove review from the hands of local officials by approving development projects simply because the Planning Board was unable to meet procedural strictures. The applicant got a full and fair hearing, asked for those continuances, and I would request that you deny the appeal.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sheehan. Want to add anything else?
No.
Okay, so yes, your letter and the minutes of the Planning Board are considered part of the record.
Thank you.
All righty. Anyone else up there, Mike?
I think there's an interesting part.
Okay, do you want to come up? And then I've got two more I've got to read. Swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Full name and address.
Dr. Heather Olson, seven eight five Union Street. Again, I also agree with what has been stated about the timeline. I attended all the meetings. At each time, the appellant agreed to provide more information at each meeting to implying that they were, you know, allowing continuance up until even November third, when they submitted even more new material to the board for their review. So along the way, they consented in their actions as partaking in this process. To answer one of your questions is, you know, why didn't they bring this up sooner? It could be stated that it wasn't until November when the town meeting, town council meeting took place, where they changed and put a moratorium on the current solar, that they then decided it was time to play their trump card and bring out the ninety days. Because if they had that all along, then that certainly should have been stated.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
I do.
Okay, full name and address.
David Howard, thirty-six Maryle Rose Drive. I just want to point out one thing, and that's the fact that all of these proceedings took place during a state of emergency, requiring Zoom. Sometimes that couldn't happen. Full representation wasn't always possible because of the pandemic. And regardless of the merits of anybody's arguments, it should be acknowledged that meeting a ninety-day window requirement under those circumstances is probably unreasonable.
Okay, I do have a letter from Nancy Howard. Dear Mr. Knott and zoning board members, again, we're meeting as the Planning Board of Appeal. Please deny the procedural appeal by Namali Power. Planning Board minutes of July fourteenth, October thirteenth, and November tenth demonstrate that Namali Power was not prepared and did not provide documentation requested by the Planning Board. For example, Namali Power never provided written comments from the Newport Water Department. This is the reason why this petition was denied, and has nothing to do with scheduling delays. And she has attached onto that excerpts from the meeting minutes. See, there is one more here. Grab it. Basically, it is sort of irrelevant. It's an email from Diana Odell. Her email deals with removal of trees vegetation and has nothing to do with timeliness. So I will not entertain that as part of this at all, so. Is there anyone else? Have a motion to close. Any further comment on this?
Mr. Chairman, you read in everything in regards to the correspondence. And you've asked for interested parties to speak. And if there's no one, I would move that we close the hearing for comments.
Could I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Which has been made in second to close the appeal to any further comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll now go on to the vote. And so the board members know this is simply a, you either grant the appeal or deny the appeal, and it takes three to two, a minimum of three votes. Either way, it's not like a normal zoning board where it's four to one. So Chairman is actually going to vote first on this one, because I spent a lot of time on this. So there's a few things, bear with me, that I'm going to state on this and to back up some of my decisions, so. So the gentleman that just spoke, it's interesting, because the June ninth meeting, my thing is, should that be considered when weighing the timeliness of the hearing? That was the night that very first meeting, that the Zoom platform went down. Mr. Ashola worked diligently for twenty minutes. Thank you, Mike. I don't know how you went through that whole thing before we got this, okay? And that platform was relatively still new. There were stability issues. Everybody knows that. Unlike today, there's a lot more options, okay? And that could have happened at numerous times, but let alone Zoom. What happened if, beginning of the night tonight, they lost a transformer and this whole building had no electricity? Way out of our control. Nothing we can do about that. When that ninety-day rule was written, there was no such thing as a pandemic that we all had to attend by Zoom and deal with all those things. Did the applicant get a complete and fair hearing in a reasonable time? The Planning Board at any time during the process could have simply voted on the merits of what was presented to them. It's based on what I've read on the minutes. I think it's safe to say, although it's speculation, that it would have been denied. And that is because it seemed that their biggest concern was that there was a protected watershed there. The public drinking source, and they consistently asked for information. Wasn't receiving it, continued it. And they have due diligence to protect the watershed district. That's why it's called the watershed protection district. Again, in my opinion, that's giving the applicant time to get what they need to make a decision. So why was the issue of timeliness not brought up by Namali Power's legal representation until November tenth? That's a good question. Because at any point in time, that trump card could have been played. Sure, there's many reasons why it was at the end. I don't know. It was not the planning board. Was there implied consent to continue multiple hearings by Namali Power and/or its legal representation? The continuances were never contested. By not doing so, was there an implied consent? That can be further supported by Mr. Sapon's consent at the conclusion of the July fourteenth hearing to provide additional information. He chimed right in, yeah, I'll get it for you. And should the one, and there's a second questionable continuance, but we'll call it one continuance by the appellant, shouldn't that be deducted out of this timeline? I mean, you asked for a continuance. So, based on all of that, do I think that Denali Power got a fair hearing? Absolutely. Do I think it was fair and reasonable? Yep, in a reasonable timeframe, absolutely. We'll never understand why the issue of timeliness was never brought up till the end. We're dealing with Zoom issues, we're dealing with remote. That was never taken into consideration when the land use regulations were done and/or the Rhode Island general law. And then there's the question of what about the continuances by Denali Power themselves, so. My vote, based on all of that, is to deny the appeal. Mr. Board?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you one hundred percent. In fact, you stole my thunder in regards to all of the points that I was going to bring up. I mean, clearly, the petitioners went along, and then when it was like denied, they said, oh, sorry. Ninety days is up, like, you know, we're going to appeal. Like, you can't, you can't do that. It would have been denied by the Planning Board, in my opinion. And so, for the reasons stated by Mr. Knott, I deny the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Board. Mr. Furell?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go through part of the timeline to explain my decision. As has been discussed, May first, the application was deemed complete. June ninth, a meeting was planned that was aborted or canceled. And there are a lot of reasons to abort or cancel a meeting. You know, if there was a hurricane or a toxic chemical spill out here on East Main Road, or a once every hundred years pandemic that has slowed down work in the town hall, in federal and state courts, in Congress, a whole bunch of stuff. So the June ninth non-meeting, while unfortunate, has a lot of explanations. Then we went to the July meeting, which was the first meeting being held on this topic. At the, at part, or at some point during that meeting, the Planning Board, in good faith, asked for more information so that they could make a better decision. Mr. Sapon agreed to provide that information. And Mr. Sapon isn't new to this. He's an experienced professional. He could have said, I'm not going to provide any information, please vote. And the planning board would have voted based on the information they had. So that brings us, the next meeting would have compromised the ninety-day window. And looking at what's noted, what's cited as appendix or Exhibit B, page three, Mr. Russo writes, the events that occurred after July thirtieth are not relevant. Because at that point, you've already exceeded the timeline. And I agree with Mr. Russo's assessment. Whatever happened after July isn't relevant to this discussion. The ninety-day period was exceeded with Mr. Sapon's approval and in the face of a hundred-year pandemic that slowed things down further. So I vote to deny the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Furell. Mr. Reposa?
I think Mr. Furell and Mr. Knott covered it pretty clearly, thoroughly. We need to reiterate things, so I vote to deny for those reasons, for those reasons previously stated.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz?
I vote to deny for reasons previously stated.
Thank you. Mr. Lynch, it has been denied. Your appeal has been denied, okay? All right, thank you. And to the members, thank you for abiding by my request to keep things on the straight and narrow. It's very much appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Could I have a second? Which has been made in second to adjourn, so the Planning Board, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?